I'm going to do a round of calls. Now, like, I'll give five minutes, five to 10 minutes, to maybe about five people or six people to give us an appraisal of how your journey has been the past one, two, three years in this community. Like to lay down some ground rules, please? One major rule is this: if I call you, don't waste our time, please. Just come quickly and just say what you have to say. Is that okay? Do we agree? I'd like to hear you answer me, please. Okay. Hallelujah. I'd like to call on Shillee. Please come out, sit here, please. Can the camera get here? Okay. That's Fisher. Front, where is best? Can this stay here? Whoever is going to answer. Okay, where she was standing was okay. All right, they say where you were standing was okay.
Bless God. So, three years ago was 2022 now. My appraisal of what has happened to me throughout those three years is the enemy has tried to uproot me a lot of times. It was so bad that I'll be sleeping, I'll be dreaming that God will carry me in a bicycle and dump me back here. I'll sleep, I'll dream that God will tell me to come down from my boss and go back to the cave. It was a lot, it was so many times. The enemy tried to uproot me from this ministry. And God didn't tell me any specific reason why he wanted me to stay, but I knew that obviously for me to be raised. I want to, I feel like one of the major struggles is being able to balance hunger for God and, would I say, like, time, really, which is why a lot of people run to the lamb's wife class, say, "Please help me." You know, so then I feel like God has raised me to be victorious in prayer, almost like while I'm yet speaking, and to walk in love and to have one allegiance, which is to God's kingdom. But there have been struggles and all of that, but those are the major things I've been able to pull out of, you know, staying in this ministry, loving God's word. And I've learnt how to retreat myself and spend time in secret with God. And thank you.
Praise God. Sister Doin.
I just want to thank God for bringing me to this ministry because I remember my first day at the fellowship. And then the Holy Spirit ministered to me and they told me that I should, said, "I want you to stay here." Because I know throughout my journey, you know, because of issues and everything, I've been here, there. But the Holy Spirit said, "I want you to stay." I know like what Shillee said, I've had so many, you know, issues or incident that could really remove me or pull me home, but I find myself, you know, the only thing I can say to him, "I want you to be here." You know, and I believe that is for my spiritual upliftment and also for that of my family too. And I could boldly say that I've gained a lot, spiritually. I've been blessed, physically, I've been blessed. And I'm the type that whenever I read the Word of God, you know, God made it, you know, the Word of God come alive, like, I'm really living in it. I've had a series of encounters with God and the Word of God. And I can boldly say with confidence that God is in this place. No matter what we are going through, God is here and is ready to help his people. God is good. Let me just put it that way. God is good. Even the way we are sitting is symbolic. I've had a series of encounter. The Bible says that as it is in heaven, so it is on earth. I know I've been in the presence of God and I've witnessed some arrangements. And I want to encourage us that even when they were telling, whenever they are telling us, "Come and sit here, come and sit here," please, don't disobey it. Just obey. Because one thing about God is that he loves a willing heart, a heart that is willing to learn. He doesn't care about our mistakes because he knows that even in that mistake, there's still strength. So, I want to thank God for the host. They are like my family, they are like my, let me say, my uncles and the aunties. You know, that God is using them and I thank God for their obedience to you, to the living of the Lord. So, praise God.
All right, you said something about arrangement. I don't understand what that means. Could you explain better?
Okay. It's based on the experience I had. We are not discussing with such. Let's discuss in the car first. I had an encounter last week after my prayer. So, I found myself in a place amongst a few people. And it was like, we're all waiting because there was a door in front and it has a bill. And then I believe it's Christ. So, God also, and I found myself entering through that door. And then it was like a living room and I saw the arrangements where people are sitting like this. And then the Lord was sitting just like this. And they had to come some people. They said, "Come and sit here." And then that makes me to like, oh, I'm kind of familiar with these arrangements. So, that is, that's...
All right, praise the Lord. Thank you so much. Did you understand what she was saying? Huh? Francis, let's hear you.
Praise the Lord. So, for the last three years, there's some major spiritual growth that has happened to me. I think I started like a journey with Cave in 2017 online. And 2018, when I moved to Lagos, I started like fellowshipping. And 2019, I kind of like continue, I'm like, okay, I'm going to start coming here. But at the later part of 2019, I got offended, like, I got offended by, I think it was a journey, so there was so much offence in my heart. And it was based on, oh, people I trusted and even like spiritual leaders and all. And that really got to me a lot. And I think fortunately, I think 2020 was that, 2019, 2020 was that time we're going through the hard series, I don't know, the offence and offence series and all. And I found myself asking a lot of questions because I never thought I could like get answers to some of them. And the way this place is designed, it was strange to me because I was coming from a place whereby before you see people that God is using, you have to, you know, wait, send emails, even when you go to meet them, you have to like stay in the living room for like four hours, five hours, blah, blah, blah. So, when I got here and number one, there is access to spiritual leaders, you can ask them questions, you can be yourself. It was very strange to me. And the offence series, I would say, I mean, yeah, the series that dealt with offence, issue of the heart, was really for me because at that point, I was already like, this Christianity thing, I don't want to do it again because I've seen a couple of things. And also, like, I've seen people I respected so much and they're like, "Oh, they're doing so much. Christians are not meant to be trusted." And that was playing out. But when I got here, I saw that in a different light. And that really make my heart more tender, regardless of how to deal with the offence. Did the offence stop? No. Did I know how to deal with it better? Yes. Why? Because I've received so much light here for how to do with that. Yeah, that's number one. The other thing, the other thing is my spiritual growth and specifically in a place of prayer, meditation and also I'm privileged to be gifted with the gift of seeing. And that also was like shaping here very well. And really, I'm really grateful for the spiritual resources, the spiritual songs, the practicality of teaching of God's word. Ever since I started journey Cave, any job I'm taking, like, small, big, Nigerian, international, I tell them, "I don't work on Saturdays." Like, during the negotiation, I just tell them, "Sorry, I can't work on Saturdays and I don't do anything on Saturdays. I go to church on Saturdays." So, there was one job I got there and they fixed major recap meeting on Saturday. I already told them during interview, sorry I'm saying all this. I've already told them during interview. So, two weeks into the job, I had to make my boss that. I told her I don't work on Saturday. I know that I'm designing or something, but I told her I don't work on Saturdays. So, that shows how much God has helped me to grow and my prayer life has really like increased and improved. And also the gift of community, the gift of people you can be vulnerable with, people you can talk to and have access to. Yes, so, yeah, that is it. Thank you.
Okay, now, I need us to understand something. It's not too much of a testimony. It's more of us, you know, each one of you using your experience to impact other people. Okay? And then also helping us to build a model for how we are going to continue the journey. Does that make sense? Do you understand that? Do you get that? I hope you hear and say what I'm saying. You know, I would want you to impute and impact while you are talking. Did you hear what I'm saying? Because it's a town hall meeting. It's a contribution. We're trying to fine tune and develop one another. Does that make sense, please? Did you hear me? Okay. Now, after this, I'm going to, myself and my wife, we're going to give you an idea of where we feel the Lord will be taking us to the journey, how we're going to go. And what I have heard, and I'm sure you guys have all heard also, is that there's been occasions, opportunities, circumstances and situations where people are going to be, at least two people have talked about how they were about to be plucked out of here, correct? And how the Lord insisted on their staying here. I hope you hear. Now, it's not much of you seeing them testifying of how this place is beneficial. I don't want that because that way to look like, oh, they are testifying and helping us to advertise the cave, that's not the intention. I want you to see the process, the inner workings of the spirit of God insisting on them staying here for something. Do you hear what I'm saying? I don't want it to be that you are helping us advertise the ministry. I want to see the struggle between the people who are talking. I hope you hear, with the spirit of God and the spirit of God winning over the people's circumstances that want to use occasions to pull them out. Does that make sense? I hope you hear what I'm saying. Praise God. So, I would want to call on Sister Bimbo. I saw her, it looked like she shifted her face behind. Please, I want you to pay attention, everybody, so that when someone new is coming up, you quickly give the microphone.
Praise the Lord.
Now, we call her Sister Bimbo, but I was shocked when I went for her. I hope, talking about your sisters, I hope, because I know that, I don't want to touch any nerve. You're good? Praise God. I didn't know how influential her family was in the kingdom. I didn't even know she's a pastor until that day. She just comes here to hide. Most of them come here to hide. So, we call her Sister Bimbo, but out there, they call her pastor. I'm really appreciative of you guys. Okay? You all right? I'm appreciative of you. I appreciate your humility and being like your father, who is a hider. You know the Lord is a hider. How many of you know God is a hider? I see them, that's what I see them do. They just come in and hide because they don't want any attention to themselves. They just want to get what they want to get. And most of the times, that's what we see here. People come in here, we don't know who they are what. Okay? And we are happy to have them, but we don't know, they just keep all their, you know, huh? accolades in a certain way. They just want to come ordinary just to get what they want to get quietly. Appreciate that and I like that. All right.
Praise God. I know you said you don't want it to sound like a testimony, but I don't know how else to make this sound. I think I was invited to the cave for the first time sometime in 2020, 2019. And I used to come for the kingdom women. Now, I've been a Christian for a long time and along the way, I just knew that something was missing. And coming here, the Lord was able to help me find, maybe not all of it, but you know, I mean, from the very first time I came here for the kingdom women prayer meeting, I knew that this was a place I wanted to always come to. And I remember I told Pastor Tchinyere some time ago that I used to pray ahead, you know, towards the Wednesday meetings. I think we used to meet on Wednesdays then. It was in the morning and it was during work hours. And I would pray to God that, "Lord, I don't want to miss this meeting. Help me cancel every meeting in the office. Help me ensure that they don't look for me." And he always honored, you know, my prayer. So, I mean, I believe that was God's way of, you know, confirming that I needed to be here. And he always ensured that I was fed anytime I came here. Then fast forward to 2020, Covid lockdown again. Okay, so, we then moved to, you know, Ogudu, close to the cave and then Covid. And I believe all of that was orchestrated by the Lord, you know, again, to ensure that I was close to this community and I was constantly being fed. I can't, I can't explain it, but you know, the Lord has really, really blessed me through this ministry, helped me to grow. You know, when you've been a Christian for a while, there's a tendency to think that, "Oh, I'm doing it right." But coming here, the Lord helped me to understand little areas, you know, that one needed to focus on. One was my love walk. If anyone had asked me, 2018, if I was walking in love, I would have, you know, put up my two hands and probably my legs as well. But I learnt something new, you know, about walking in love, just being in this community. Another area was, you know, being able to overcome offence, like Francis said. Again, if I was asked if I was somebody who walked in offence, I would have said, "No." But, you know, just being around here and listening to the teachings helped me to understand that, you know, there are just little, little things that one needed to pay attention to. And again, I think part of the reason, or I believe part of the reason the Lord brought me here was to also use it to, in my own little way, you know, help others, you know, teach them. So, I would take the learnings and the teachings from here and carry it to, you know, my own little community in church, my department. And, you know, just share with them some of the things. And I've seen, by the grace of God, you know, some impact in their lives as well, you know, little things, especially this thing around offence. I'm sure we all know the things that go on in church, you know. This one is offended with that and all of that. So, God has helped me to, you know, and he's still helping me to do that in the midst of all of us. I haven't had dramatic experiences like Shillee had where, you know, I'll see God carry me in a bicycle and all, but there's no doubt in my mind that, you know, this is where the Lord wants me to be. And I have grown immensely and I'm grateful to God for that and I'm grateful to you, to everyone in the community. It's just so nice, you know, just being amongst people that you can be yourself, you can be real, you know, no airs. And this is one thing that, it's one of the many things that I have enjoyed being here. And then also, you know, that thing of praying for others with so much, I don't know if the right word is devotion, you know, that selflessness. I mean, we went through a period where we were praying for, I can't remember how many months, you know, we had the prayer watch and everyone was so committed. And the most beautiful thing of it was that the Lord answered our prayer. You know, every single one of the ones we lifted up, the Lord heard and answered. And that just built my faith, you know, immensely. And I'm always so quick to use that experience, you know, to encourage, to encourage others. And let me stop here, but yeah, so that has been my journey so far. Recently, I, not because of offence or anything, recently, I almost, you know, slipped back for reasons, I'm sure, you know, some of you would know. But again, there was community, you know, to help and I'm so grateful. Thank you. I don't know if what I've said makes sense, but yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, now, let's play back on what she said. Okay? Let's play back on what she said. And that's also, that plays out in what Francis was saying. That is insisting on depriving yourself of the demands of Babylon so that you can feed from the Lord's table. Did you notice that in what both of them said? All right? Did you hear what I just said? I mean, like she said she would pray, okay, so that she would disappear from the heart of her system, office system, her boss. They wouldn't remember her. So, if I, they wouldn't even call on her for some reason. Why? Because she engaged her priesthood. Okay? I hope you hear what I'm saying. And then what I saw and what she was saying is being a giver. I hope you hear what I'm saying. Understanding that you are not here to just receive and receive, but you are here to take on the nature of the Lord, that who is a giver. Did you hear that? Hallelujah. Praise God. And then what else did she say again? Something very profound. She talked about community. Now, the purpose and the reason why we have this kind of setup because you might not understand that your easy accessibility to anyone, especially the leadership, is because there's a system in place. Did you hear that? There's a system in place. Francis said the same thing, that you won't spend some months just because you want to see a pastor. Did you get? So, it means that there's no defence mechanism. There's no force field that would hinder people from, did you get that? Now, it's because of the structure that is in place. Okay? And what else did she say? Who can remember something else she said?
She's talking about love walk.
Love walk. Okay. Ability to overcome offence. Now, when they say things like this, I want you to either go to them, okay? Or receive the principles or the spirit of what they are saying. Did you hear? I like what Francis was saying, that offence, it don't stop. But something changed. What changed? Ability to, huh? To handle it, to overcome. Hallelujah. One more person. Choose someone.
Okay, who would I choose now? Okay, so you have chosen. I wanted to call Dial.
Dial, okay.
Okay. Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. Okay. I think I joined the cave about five years ago, but it was off and on. And I think my journey started proper when we started with the lamb's wife, the first lamb's wife. And for me, that training was something that the Lord used to stay up something within me. And it helped me a lot. And it was the beginning of so many things that kicked off afterwards. Apart from that was the several meetings that we've had here, the Watchman Prophet Conference, the Yahweh to Face,
The Watchman Prophetic Conference, the Yahweh to Face, where different ministers would come. You know, with their different um graces and. Those meetings helped to shape my ability to go into the world and. You know, it helped me such that I could pick up my Bible and wouldn't be afraid of the ability to understand because. This company has helped me to, it's like a fast track that the Lord has used this company for, for me because. Regardless of your um, of your level and of spiritual growth, there's a way that. You come here and you hear from different people and this. And I don't know how it happens, but you know, it's just. A situation where no matter how low or mid-level that you are, when you come here, you. Find out that you are growing and, you know, initially, you know, um. There were a few challenges that always made me go to, to mama and I would call, talk. And, you know. For now, it's because of the different teachings and the trainings that, that I've heard. It has helped me to stand and helped me to pray, helped me to trust that regardless of whatever it is. I could just keep pushing and pushing because I see that there is lights. And another thing this has helped me with is our children. You know, the company has helped to, you know. Help them because what they are being fed here with is something that the. Helps them to grow because when we get, there are some questions I ask them. Maybe after Camp Josiah, Camp, you know, I don't know, I can't remember the names of. Camp Daniel, eh heh. Eh heh, then all those meetings, I ask them and the way they respond helps me to understand that. That they are really growing and I really appreciate God for this because, you know, there are some times that you just, the devil wants to take you out and. You're in that place where you are struggling as to whether you should come or not. When I come here, I, you know, even if there's. Um there isn't any administration and I just sit, the atmosphere is such that it will just help you to. You know, realign, it helps you to reset such that when I go home, it helps me to. Go back into God's Word, helps me to read. I love to read God's Word now, I love to pray. And I know that this is something that um. Is so special to me and I don't know what my life would have been if I'm not here. So, I bless God. Another thing here for me is the ability to express your giftings without being held back. You know, you can come and you say you see something. This is my first time of coming to a meeting where you can express. Yourself and that's because of the spiritual leadership here that, you know. Not that they encourage you to come and just, you know, release it, but they're able to, their level of discernment, I'm not trying to say that. I'm not trying to praise them, but, you know, in a setting where the Bible tells us that all of these gifts is for the body. And the atmosphere here is encouraging those giftings, under the leadership of, of, of. The man and the woman of God, where they're able to check, okay, is this the right thing, is this the wrong thing? So that people with these giftings, because me, because I've come here, I'm, I'm, I really want to express those giftings, those prophetic like Antifoluke. Like Francis and the rest. So it makes me want to also, you know, because it's our. Inherit as part of what we should have as children of God. So when I go before God, I say, God, I want to have this, I want to have that, so. I bless God for that. Thank you. Alright. Alright. Um it's, I think um, something I just want us to. Um appreciate God for is that we have free access to the presence of God. Right? So God is the Most High, the Most High, the Almighty, the Most High. So if anyone could have free access to the Most High. Why should human beings not have access to the least high? To the lowest of the highs? It's, it's very important, you know, that leaders don't take the place of God. In the lives of the people. It's, it's important that um. It's very important, very, very important, that leaders bring people, take people to the Lord. And not to themselves. Very important. Now, the risk of that, which many people run away from, why they don't do that. Is loss of people, loss of regard, loss of honour, loss of respect. Because when you come to places where. Um, the set man is exalted, everybody's, the place is flowing. Everybody seems to, they're not gaining anything, but somehow Satan feeds. The minds of people, you know, is, is a controlling thing, okay? And um, but where Christ really is. Satan will fight you not to be there. So if you've won that fight, you are strong. If you won the fight to stay here, God has shown you great, great mercy. And you will see your reward. Because you will become what those who left would never become. And I'm not saying that. Because we're bragging. An apple tree grows best where it was ordained to grow. If you bring apple tree to Lagos, no matter what you do to it, it will never grow. Because it was not made to grow in Lagos, it was made to grow in a temperate environment. So that's how, that's how the blessings, that's how the reward. And, you know, those instructions, it's, it's. It's because of the plan of God. And it's not just the plan of God for your personal life, it's the plan of God for himself. For his kingdom, for his house, where each brick should be, where each window should be, where each door should be. So when you're supposed to have a window, instead of having a window that if you put blocks there, you've altered the ventilation of that property. So because people don't understand the building of God's house, they make a mess of the. Their own portion of the building. Of, I know so many people that left, they are meant to be here. Some of them left because of offence, some left. You know, and we thought so much on offences because. That's the only way Satan can stop, stop you. Either you're offended towards another man or you're offended towards God. And when you get offended towards God, the person who teaches you God is the leader of any ministry. So the next thing is you leave that place. Because you're offended with God, you know. Um, sometimes people struggle with religion. What is religion? It is traditional Christianity that you go to church on Sundays. So because of going to church on Sundays, many people who are meant to be here, dedicated to here. Focused on the army that we've been instructed to raise. Can't be here because they have to be in a traditional church on Sundays. Unfortunately, there's nowhere after the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ where the meeting day is Sunday. The church met daily at the temple. The church met, met daily from house to house. That's the pattern we see in the New Testament. The pattern in the Old Testament was to meet on the Sabbath day. There's so many patterns in the Old Testament that God has reordered because now the Spirit of God is inside everybody. You didn't need to go to Jerusalem. To meet the Spirit of God. Praise God. Hallelujah. Um, so, um. There was something else I wanted to say. There was something else I wanted to say. I've forgotten, I slept. When I remember. Okay, I should call one more person. Okay, let me call. Yes, another thing, let me just say that she talked about the giftings, okay? Also, the reason why, the reason why. Most churches do not allow the um expression of the giftings of God. In fact, even when they have smaller meetings, smaller, maybe like house fellowships or. You know, they still, they oversee and still want to either stereotype activities going on there. You know, just so that the people don't begin to. So it's the carrying over of an old wine, you know, and um it's because they are threatened. Yeah, they are threatened. They are afraid of losing their position, they are afraid of losing the people. But a lack of, that's because of a lack of understanding of what their assignment is for. The offices, the pastor, teacher, that office, those offices. They are for the building up of the body, for the work of the ministry. So the offices are to build the people so that the people can do ministry. So how can the people do ministry without their giftings? How can they do ministry without they themselves entering into their offices? It can't work. You know, so um also because human beings like. Worshipping other human beings and they like people that can tell them what they don't know. So, um because most people that have gifts, the gifts that attracts a lot of attention the most is a prophetic. I see, I saw, see for me, see for me, see for me. Praise God. But a sound ministry, a sound ministry, the teaching ministry is actually the highest. The teaching ministry is what grounds the people. Let me not say it's the highest, let me say it's the most important, the most critical. Okay, because the teaching ministry will help you even learn what you are seeing, because it's not everything you see that is right. And after you have begun to see, there's interpretation. The Bible is full of things prophets saw that nobody has understanding of. It's loaded, Ezekiel is full, Jeremiah is full, Isaiah is full, even the book of Revelations is full. From chapter five, in the book of Revelations, are things they saw that nobody has understanding of. So it's not just about seeing, it's about the knowledge of Christ. You know, so the teaching, the teachers, the found prophetic teachers of God's Word. Are meant to, by the Spirit of God, you know, throw into people. The light that is required to interpret seeing. So when you know that, you're not bothered about seeing, you're not threatened by seeing. You know, you teach the people to follow the Lord and not to follow signs and wonders. It's signs and wonders that should follow a believer. Not the other way around. Praise God. And one critical thing everyone has been saying is offence and offence is a virus. That is waiting at the door of every place where they say Christians are gathered. Anybody that is passing through that door, there's an invisibility that gives you a shot on the left arm. You can be offended because an usher told you not to sit there. You can be offended because the pastor talked about somebody and didn't talk about you. You can be offended because the pastor preached about you, not knowing, you don't know he doesn't know anything about you. And you just decide that the pastor is talking about me. You know, different kinds of things. Yesterday. I went to the market and I, I used Uber. We don't have cars, it's strange, but suddenly we don't have cars. As, yeah, yesterday, between yesterday and today, I was suddenly, I remember Job and I said, wow. I said, the things that happened to Job, happened to Job in one day. When you read it, you are like, is this really the truth? You know, same day, this one, this report came, this one came, this one came. So we experienced that in one day, all our cars shut down. In one day. So I went to the market, I went to Tadjuishu Market, I needed to get some things for my daughters. So I went to, I called Uber and when I, when I was listening to the, the woman's voice. Um it was a woman's voice, the driver, it was a woman's, I was intrigued. I was like, I wanted to ask her, are you a woman or a man? How could a man be talking like this? Until she showed up. Wow, I looked at her like, wow, you are a lady. She said, yes, I am. So instead of sitting at the back, I sat in front. I sat in front and I just loved on her. I was so excited. I said, wow, you're a woman, you're doing this. I said, yes, I said, you love it? She said, I love it. I said, so you are strong. She said, yes, I am. I said, how many hours you drive a day? She said, ten, twelve hours. I said, you're kidding me? She said, yes. She told me so much about Uber, so much. If you are hungry in this Lagos, can I permit me to be a bit nasty? You are a fool and you are lazy. I'm telling you, you are a fool and you are lazy. She was a banker, she was working in GT Bank as a contract staff, she was earning ninety something thousand naira. A month. She said she makes twice of that money in a week, some in two weeks. So every month, take home, not what she gives to the owner of a car. Every month she makes nothing less than four hundred and something thousand naira. She said yesterday when she was going, she bought grilled fish for her children, seven thousand, eight thousand naira, she paid for the fish. When she got home, I said, babe, where did you find money? She said, as a banker, she could never have done that, you know. So, but whenever I enter Uber, I always look for opportunity to minister Christ. Okay, if you're a Christian, I want to know what level of Christianity are you in? Maybe I could take you higher. Or if you're not in the kingdom at all, I bring you into the kingdom. You know, or encourage you to use your car as a tool of evangelism. Get tracks, put in the car. The, one man told me, he said, the only thing I carry is prostitutes, girls, girls, girls. I said, where are the tracks? Where, what are you doing with them? Should be bringing them into the kingdom, you know. So, um so we started talking about Jesus. I said, well, you've told me so many wonderful things, lovely, lots of. She gave me lots of information, business ideas, I'm gonna share it, but not today. She said, um, she said that, um, she's offended. That she can never go to church again. So because I asked, I said, what about Jesus? Where is Jesus in your life? I mean, we've talked about so many wonderful, wonderful things. I said, so there's just one more wonder we need to talk about, Jesus. She said, ah, I know him. I said, fantastic, you are saved. She said, yes. But I don't go to church anymore. Ah, I said, why? She said, ah, she doesn't go to church anymore, she can never be in church again, she will never go back to church. I said, why? She said she won't tell me the reason, that if she, if she talks about it, she will start crying. I said, no, you will tell me. Now I know why I entered your car. I said, you will tell me the reason. She said she won't tell me. I said, you're going to tell me. I said, you know why you're going to tell me? She said, the church, they are not teaching truth, it's, it's um, it's um emotional, what do you call it? Not emotional blackmail. No, 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 I, forget about emotion, um motivation, motivation. She says all motivational teachings, that she used to go to deeper life. Ah, I looked at her, her hair was short and she had coloured it. Gold or orange, she knows some fairy colours. So I said, hey, deeper life, I got much more interested. I said, ah. So I want to know what's happened. She said, no, she won't tell me. I said, you're going to tell me. I'll tell you what, you drop in the market, you go and wait for me. Let your machine run, I'll pay, I don't care. I said, let it run. You wait, when I'm done, I'll call you, we'll continue the journey. So I, she stopped, parked and, you know, we came back, we continued. I finished what I was doing in the market. I called her and we continued the journey. She told me, she said, her husband was a leader. I called her, we continued the journey, she told me, she said, her husband was a leader in one of the churches. And did business with her mother leader. And he was a friend, her husband is a friend to one of the former governors, and that governor wanted to help him. Okay, because they knew themselves maybe way back, and the governor gave them a contract, I don't want to mention the state. So the governor gave them a contract, and he, this co-leader in church, co-pastor in church, he brought him, they trusted themselves, so because of that, they didn't have any written agreement. They just trusted by words of mouth, and they used his company to do the job. And the money was to go to his company after the job. They finished the job, the profit was two hundred and fifty million naira. The guy did not give them a dime. See how you're reacting? So we can continue writing, and this is the town we're missing, right? Is it what it's all about? You're enjoying it? Okay, alright, okay, yes, yes, I will get there. So anyways, um the money was, so they tried to take up the case. And the guy just didn't give them the money, and the leadership of the church, you know, couldn't get that guy to give them the money, and didn't do anything to his office, they still left him, you know, and she, she got it, eh? Yes, of course, of course, of course, yes, tight, yes, yes, yes. So anyways, um so because of that, they left, so I said, is that why you left? She said, yes, I said, so because of that, you have forsaken the gathering together of believers. So I began to teach her the word of God, I opened the scriptures and I started teaching her. I started showing her scriptures, upon scriptures, upon scriptures, upon scriptures, I said, you say you don't like motivational teaching. So what is it that you like? Life, right? Eternal life, right? So eternal life has content. The content of eternal life is the life that Jesus wants us to live. It's not coming to a religious setting where everyone is pretending. And where if nobody steps on you, everything is fine, the day someone steps on you. You know, so that's not, eternal life, the life has to be tested, we have to be tried, we have to be passed through fire. And in the course of the teaching, because my husband and I have been defrauded so many times, family inheritances, my husband did not touch his family inheritance, being a first son in the family. Okay, when I shared that one with her, the same experience I had nineteen ninety-nine or so, did a contract with a lady in Chevron, uh Texaco, when it was Texaco. Was, I did all the job and she didn't give me a dime, she took the money and they relocated. And didn't give me, and didn't give me a dime. And I made peace with her, she looked at me, you made, yes, I made peace with her. You know, then I told her about um, a, a, a situation in the church I used to attend. You know about it, where, okay, first of all, our car crashed, my husband's car crashed. It was another Job experience, you know, bum, 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 bum. My husband's car crashed, beyond repairs, the church announced they would buy me another car, they never did till today. Um, the pastors, you know, just things along those lines, by the time I gave her all my experiences. I told her, so you see, today's meeting was not ordinary, she said she believes. She said she believes, she said, she now said something, she said her husband started praying and fasting last week. Twenty-one days fast or thirty days fast. And asking God to show them which church to go to, because they need to go back to church. But that she was not willing, but that meeting me today, she realized that they must overcome that offence, they must overcome that, she must overcome. I said, if because of money, you abandon the gathering, then it means that money is more important to you. This money, okay, so when I, when I told her about my husband's inheritance, that my husband walked away from, and told her what happened to him after he walked away from that inheritance. She, I said, if you stayed in church and forgave the man, maybe God would have given you another contract of two point five billion. God would have paid it for you. Do you understand? But now you've revenged yourself and you are driving Uber. Do you see? So very important that we must overcome offence at any level. At any level, very important. Is Allah, is a praise Allah or something. Thanksgiving or worship or something. Praise God, hallelujah, so offence, 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 offence is everywhere. It's everywhere, it's easy, very easy to get offended, very easy. So we need to feed, and, and you know, as you mature, as you mature, offences will come at different levels. It will not come at the level it came to you when you were a child, do not come at the level, do you understand? Every level of growth, every level of promotion, there's an offence exam waiting for you there. You know, praise God. So this is our labor, that's what Paul said in the scriptures, he said, in this I labor. So it's a labor, right, to exercise myself. To be void, free of offences towards God and towards man. So she asked for the address of, of this place. She might not come, because this might not be where God wants her, okay, but um she, it was, it was a blessing. So I want us to just take that, you know, very important, very, very important. Uh, that money can change somebody's life forever. That money should change your life forever, even fifty million should change your life forever. Let alone two hundred and fifty million. Of back then, yes, yes. So, but you can't, because of Jesus said, I told her, they, they, I gave her the parable of the, of the, of the guy that came to Jesus to share their inheritance. I said, Jesus' response was beware of covertiousness. Praise God, hallelujah.
Praise God. Maybe a bit later. Okay, now, this thing she said is very important. Okay, it's very important because looking at me, I see billionaires. In front of me, I see kings. In front of me, I see royalty. In front of me, I'm seeing people that have the capacity to move nations and move stuff. So in the very near future, there's gonna be um relationships, business relationships. Okay, and it's important for you to understand that you should be fully built up so that when you get into partnerships, you'll be able to trust. You should be able to understand to have written contracts. And you should be able to know what to do when a brother whom you trusted dupes you. I hope you hear. And then you should not because of that, leave the fellowship of the brethren. I hope you hear. And if you are deeply hurt, and I know you will, if you are duped, especially by the person who loves you or somebody whom you love and someone who you've trusted and someone who you ate from the same plate. Do you get? What would you do? You need to learn that, you need to learn how to build your capacity. I hope you hear, and then you need to learn to be able to trust again. I don't know if you understand what I'm saying. Did you get that? Praise God. Yeshua said that offence would surely come. So, you know, and he's not gonna stop you from being offended. But he's going to teach you how to overcome the offence, because when you are able to learn how to overcome the offence and when more offences come and it doesn't get to you anymore, what it means is that you have added the nature of Christ to your person. Is that clear? I mean, like, Yeshua was saying that he came to his own, and they asked him that who did this to you? Who put all these marks on your body? And he would say, I came to my friends, I came to their house and they did this to me. Right? Hallelujah. So what we are going to be looking at in the future is saints in this place and elsewhere that have built so much capacity. I remember Adama and what she was giving opportunity to to deal with in her office, in her workplace. Okay, and all her attempts to overcome, she won some. Maybe she lost some, correct? Yeah, you lost some, okay, but you were given an opportunity. Alright, hallelujah, and apart from you, some other people, what do you do when you are choked with you know, things that you're trying to live, right, you're trying to practice what you learnt and the circumstance or situation is smarter than you. What I mean by that is that you try to implement what you've learnt and somehow the situation or circumstances dodging all your righteousness and all your nature of God, okay? And you see yourself still either in a place of offence and things like that. Praise God. So I need you to understand that this is true Christianity. I hope you hear, where you are faced with issues of life, circumstances, offences and things like that. What do you do? Do you get offended, get angry, you want to keep your peace, you want to do this, you want to do that, and you move elsewhere? Without staying in the midst of it, okay, and overcoming. I hope you hear what I'm saying. Praise God. Hallelujah, I'm gonna give her one more opportunity a little bit later, but it's already six o'clock. And I want us to understand something, that um most of you have talked about the different kinds of pattern of ministry that you have seen here. I believe and I perceive that the Lord wants us to push a little bit more, okay? And um I'm hoping that we are gonna be seeing more of kingdom, structure. We have to be bold about it. We have to journey away a little bit gradually from what we have known to be church. Okay? You know, she talked about people who insist that service must be on Sunday, that is the day of sun. Okay? Uh, she mentioned that every day, every day is Christmas. That's what Shady sang in her song, every day is Christmas. So every day is for the Lord, okay? Praise God, but whenever there's a call for you know, gathering of the saints, let's not turn it down. I hope you hear what I'm saying, what did I say? Whenever there's an opportunity for fellowship, never turn it down, did you hear what I said? We try to call for fellowship, we try to call for, you know, u- us to gather again and people have one excuse or the other, please, let's understand that fellowship is very, very crucial. Very important. Because there's something that the gathering of the saints, there's something it does, it says, but you have not come to uh a mountain that uh cannot be touched, right? But you have come to Mount Zion, the city of God. Now, if I ask you, what's the meaning of the city of God, what are you going to say? What do you understand by that? Sister Folukha. When it say, when it says, but you have come to Mount Zion, the what? The city of who? Of the living God, what does it mean? What does that mean?
For me, it means the, the spiritual gathering of the body of Christ.
Okay.
Uh, in communion together, um encouraging each other, edifying each other, um exalting the Most High God, um focusing on Christ. Manifesting light. As they come together and realizing that it's the Christ in them that is um going to um bring glorification. And that is the end journey of everything that we're doing in this life. It's a, Zion is the place where um our faith is built up. It's where love really manifests, because as you come together, you, you even, your love becomes stronger when you're together, when you're in sincerity together, love manifests. And it's where hope is built as well, in that the um eternal journey can be achieved. At least that's what I, I see it as.
Okay, who else can add to that? Hey, come out. Quickly, please.
Okay, um I think in addition to what, um Sister Folukha have said, it's a gathering of the light of God, those that have developed their mind, they have known God. You know? What makes a city is the mindset of the people that are there. So it's a gathering of people who have learnt God, they have developed.
Alright, thank you, who else?
Praise the Lord Jesus, so what uh that place means to me? Charlie, as Papa asks, I had to look again. Um talking about that we've come to Zion, the, Mount Zion, the city of the living God to the heavenly Jerusalem. What particularly stood out for me was the word city, that's uh the highest expression of a civilization. Like where you see it all, it's, we are not talking about things at the lower, uh the, the lowest levels. You see the efforgence of what that system is about, so in coming to Mount Zion, the word mountain shows us, I say, peak, this is the highest that God can ever give. This is where you are, you are not um here to experience God in shadows, but you are coming to the city of the living God, the city of the living God, God is real and you are being, you are God is real and you are being, you are, you are immersed in his reality to the fullest. So that's, that's what it means to me.
Okay, who else? Because something just hit me when I, when I call that.
Praise God. So what comes to mind is an entire civilization. That is, you're talking about. A culture, a nation, a people with a lifestyle. When you see them, you are seeing a tribe, a nation. You know, when you are seeing, for example, a Nigerian, that's what you see. Anywhere in the world. And you ask, are you a Nigerian? It's okay, I know you're Nigerian now. Because when a Nigerian talks, the way they behave outside Nigeria, you just know they are Nigerians. They are loud. That's how we talk about. Our own civilization. So when you see. The city of God, that civilization, when you see them, you just know, like they said. They are Christians. They have worked with Christ. There's something that is coming out of them that can't be compared to another. Just like the stones, the different stones, that they said we are living stones. So the stones, different pearls are shining. And we see them that they said their light is not from outside, but from within, they are shining and bringing different. Variations of colors of light. That's what we see when we talk about that city.
Praise God. Who else, somebody else, Shillee was talking, raised up her hands.
I want to drop from what they said. Um, the city, I'm just thinking of Nebuchadnezzar. He was looking at his city and he's like, wow, this thing that I built by myself. So I believe that a city is the expression of what is in the heart of a king. So he would design it the way he wants, I want the walls to be like this, and I want the water to flow like this, this is how the water system should be. Electricity should run twenty-four seven. So everything you see in that city is what is in the heart of that king, that, let's say, mayor or governor. So coming to Mount Zion, the city of God, so when you come to Mount Zion, you see exactly what God wants. Exactly, all his thoughts, his imaginations, his laws, his systems. So in that city, you have angels that minister to ease of salvation, you have the church of the living God. There is a justice system that, that has a mediator. And then you see the ministry of the blood, then you see how people resolve their issues. You know, they will go and report to their king that, see what people in Babylon have done to Mew, you know, the judge of all flesh. Then there's, basically, it's justice system, it's, I would like to say, executive arm, where the angels implements the mind of God. You know, so basically, God's mind, everything he's thinking, everything that is in his heart expressed.
Okay. You want to say something? Okay, alright. Uh, give him.
Why are we waiting for you? Let me just read this scripture. Who wants to say something, is it Namdi? Um, I just want to read, it's exciting what is coming out, Psalm forty-eight. Psalm forty-eight, verse twelve. Um, let's, let's start from verse nine. It said, we have thought of your loving kindness, O God, in the midst of your temple. According to your name, O God, so is your praise unto the ends of the earth. Your right hand is full of righteousness. Let Mount Zion rejoice, let the daughters of Judah be glad because of your judgments. Then from verse twelve, it says, walk around Zion. And go round about her. Tell the towers thereof, so there are towers in the city, right? Any tower you see, talk about those towers. Mark ye well her bull walks. Consider her palaces, that you may tell it to the generation following. For this our God is, for this God is our God forever and ever. He will be our guide even unto life. Leave this man that wrote death there.
So when, when, when Papa asked what, um. I think the initial question was, what is the city of God? What, what came to my mind was how. In a city, there are buildings and there are structures and, and how we are. We ourselves, we believers are tabanakos. And as we come, we are a city. And, 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 and like each one, each house, each person is a building, each person is a tower, each person is a. Is a skyscraper, we have different buildings. And then we come, yeah, like, so like that was a picture that came to my mind and I was going to share.
Any other person?
Praise the Lord. Okay, when we talk about the Mount Zion and as the city of God. So me. The city is all about a person. Just like. Abraham said he is, you know, joining, looking for a, 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 a city whose builder is God. So that city is a person. And. What we consider is a lifestyle of the person. And how we can become that person is all about the nature of a, a person which is God. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah. Praise God. You have something you want to say again? Now, you see, what I saw there, you know, Yesha said that you are the light of the world. And then he said, a city that is settled on here cannot be hidden. Okay? So it means that you are a city. Okay? You are a city. Now, but here, he's saying that this is the city of the living God. Now, you said it's a person. Now, if you look at the book of Psalm one hundred and thirty-three, it says, behold, how. How, how what? How good and how pleasant it is for brethren to compact themselves together. To dwell together. He says, it's like a what? It's like an oil that runs down the beds, the head, the beds of Aaron, okay? Down his skirts, down his garment, and it says like a dew upon Mount Hermon. And then it says something, it says, it's like ma. This, the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord has commanded his nature. Okay, and it says, life everlasting. I hope you hear. Did you hear that? So when we are calling for the gathering of the saints. Okay? We're telling you to come and occupy your space, your lot. Do you understand? You are part of the body of the Messiah. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So when you stay back. Okay, you are out of the body. I hope you hear what I'm saying. Hallelujah. Now. When you stay out. There's something missing from the body of the Messiah. I hope you hear. Now, Satan tried to sift Peter. And Peter denied the Lord. And Peter ran away from the Lord. Now, Peter was holding an integral aspect of the body. Correct? So the Lord insisted, said, go and tell my disciples and who? He says, go tell my disciples and Peter. Do you understand? So it was important for him to insist on the man Peter. Because he knew that the guy was full of guilt. So he said, go and tell my disciples. Was Peter not part of his disciples? Uh? So Peter had actually been plucked out. You understand? So the Lord had to call him back, tell my disciples and Peter that I have risen. You get what I'm saying? So you can't, now, I know you will say, oh, it's a universal body. True. But universal? In spirit? Okay, but that spirit has to manifest in the flesh. Did you hear? It is when. There's that flesh. That you deal with all the offenses. You can't deal with it in the spirit. It's in the flesh. Do you get? Now, people like to say, oh, I'm part of the body in the spirit. We already know you are in the spirit. Come out, come out in the flesh, manifest that thing that is in that life manifested in the flesh. I hope you hear. Let it be in the flesh. Because. Any spirit that does not believe that Yesua came in the flesh is the spirit of the Antichrist. So you have to come out in the flesh. Okay? Your brother has to offend you and bruise you. You bleed and you stay there. You won't move, you won't go out. I hope you hear. You won't look for an occasion to go out and unplug yourself. Do you understand? You will stay there, let them offend you and then love them. Did you hear? Now that is Christianity. That means you are a king. I like that, that is city life. That's the life of the city. You get that? That is the life of the city, the city of God. So you have not come to a mountain. That may be touched, that bond with fire. And to blackness and darkness and tempests. And the sound of trumpet and the voice of words. So that those who heard it begged that the word should not be spoken to them anymore. For they could not endure what was commanded. Did you hear? They didn't want to come to the mountain. They said Moshe to go and hear for them. They couldn't endure the words that was meant for them, the commandment. I hope you hear. When you come in the gathering of the saints, you are able to receive the commandment, did you hear? You won't receive it from outside. Okay? You receive it here in the gathering, okay? Are we together, please? Praise God. Don't send someone on your behalf. Let the pastor, well, here, go and come and tell me. You have a lot, you have a position there. We don't want you missing, we want you there. I want to turn and I see you. I hope you hear what I'm saying. When I see you, I have strength. Did you hear? Are we together? When I see you, I have strength to push on. Praise God. It says, even so much as the beast touches the mountain, it will be stoned and shot to death. And it was so terrifying, aside that Moshe had to say, I am exceedingly afraid and trembling. Verse twenty-two says, but you have come to Mount Zion. The city. Of the living God. The heavenly Jerusalem. To an innumerable company of messengers. To the assembly. And the church. Of the firstborn. Who are registered. In the spirit. You have also come to God. So it's the city of God, so when you come there, you've come to the Father. Correct? Uh? To the judge of all. To the spirit of just men made perfect. And you have also come to who? To Yesua, the mediator of the living covenant. And to the blood of sprinkling that speaks better than the blood of. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So the body of Christ, the body of the Messiah. Imagine my hand saying, I'm not coming here. You have changed the body of the Messiah. Praise God. Hallelujah, you have something you want to say?
When you were talking about. The importance of gathering when a meeting is called, my, my heart went to this scripture in Hebrews chapter ten. Why you can't make progress. Isolated. So, um, there are many of our brethren who are committed to the meetings. Okay, let me leave that. Hebrews chapter ten, it says, from verse twenty-three, it says, let us hold fast the profession of our faith. Without wavering. So don't stagger, don't waver, okay? For he is faithful that promised. Okay? Let us consider one another to provoke unto love. And to good works. By what? Not forsaking the assembling of ourselves together. You can't provoke love. You can't provoke good works if you don't come together. You can't. You can't. You yourself will not be trained in love. So you might receive the knowledge of love. By listening to Kenner Hagan, reading Kenner Hagan. And, you know, everything he taught, we're reading Love, The Way to Victory and Lamb's Wife. Where having the book reviews, but. Those things you've heard, you must write the exam. And the exam is life application. If they gossip about me, what did Kenner Hagan say you should do? Do it. You will see, it's not always easy to do it. That means you have not been perfected in love. Do you see? So you have to allow yourself to be exposed to an atmosphere. Where that training can take place. Where those who teach it, practice it. So you can learn, you know, grow deeper in it. That lady I was with yesterday, I shared with her a testimony. Of how. In a certain church where I was, I was invited for all the women gathered together to plan a shower. For the head. For the head pastor's wife. And we all contributed money. And everybody picked what they would do, some people said they would make fried rice, some, you know, I was supposed to make beef kebabs. And I contributed my money, this was in year two thousand and six. Two thousand and six or two thousand and seven. And. Um, the day was on a Sunday, when we were ready to go, someone called me, who is in the inner caucus of. The pastor's, whatever. I said, the, the law feast had been cancelled, the party had been cancelled. I said, really? She said, yes, it had been cancelled. So I had, I was moved to call another sister. I said, I hear the law feast has been cancelled, she said, no, hasn't been cancelled though, we're going there. I'm on my way there now, I said, really? She said, yeah, I said, ah, this particular sister called me to say it's been cancelled, so I shouldn't bother to come. And then when she got to the place, all the women were there. And she asked, why did you people, you, why did you call Sister Chira to say the party had been cancelled? You, why did you call Sister Chiner to say the party had been canceled? She said, oh, that they are not sure I'm wanted here. That they are not sure I'm wanted in this place. They said, eh. So they started talking and arguing. Okay, but now she has found out that the thing is holding. How are we going to handle that? That was an issue for them. So after talking for a while, another lady who was there said, okay, why don't we go and ask the senior pastor? If he has anything against Sister Chiner coming to their house, that I'm not wanted in pastor's house. And they went to meet the pastor and asked, pastor, please, um, is Mrs. Sibor? Is it, is there any way possible that she can enter your house? Is she allowed to enter your house? And the guy said, ah, yes, why not? She's allowed to enter my house. Now whether he meant that or not is between him and God. Okay? So the, so another sister now called me. I said, ah, Sister Chiner, where are you? I said, I'm in my house. She said, start coming now. Start, start coming now, 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 just start coming. I said, eh, okay, have you people cleared the coast now? You know, I used to be very sarcastic. My husband is drilling me and making sure all that is knocked off. Cause I use it on him sometimes. So I said, have you people cleared the coast now? Everything is fine now. He says, yeah, I say, okay, I've heard. So I carried my bag. If you are the one, will you go? You will never go, right? So I asked that lady yesterday, I said, if you are the one, will you go? She said, she can go. For what? I said, well, I went. I went. My husband was looking at me when I was going. He said, you're going? I said, yes, I will go. Because also in that church, I have always, we have always been different. Understanding of scriptures, spiritual things, they are teaching this way, we are teaching that way. Okay? So I asked the Lord many times, can I leave this place? We are not one. We are not saying the same thing. And the Lord said, don't go. I said, I've told you, I said, they don't like me here. They don't want me here. They call me spiri, spooky, blah, blah, blah. You are too spiri, you are too this. Ah, it's not such a, she has come again. Judgmental, very judgmental. Because you are correcting, correcting people's work. So I went. And when I got there, when I entered, I didn't enter with offense. I just entered, I laughed. I called the lady that told me not to come and said, what happened? And I said it openly. I said, what happened? Have you people changed? You guys canceled and reinstated? So they were looking at me like, I think this woman is really crazy. There's something else she's looking for. Because this is just so shameful. She should go and hide herself, her face in shame. Well, I remember when we used to listen to Calivana. There was a particular elderly man that used to go to Calivana's, that used to minister alongside Calivana sometimes. And the guy, you know, talked about where he used to, a particular ministry where they didn't want him, but that he was obligated to love them. So that he would just go and sit down. And he knew that they all wanted him to leave. And he said, no, I'm not gonna leave. Because you are my brethren. And I'm not here for evil. I'm not here to fight you. I'm here to love you. I'm here to be a part of you. Praise the Lord. So I went for that law feast that day and I stayed. And I wasn't the first person to go. I was the second to the last person to leave. I helped to clear up. I helped to do everything. And I left. A little while, if one, two years, you know, ahead, I became the head of the women's ministry in that, in that same ministry. Stones with the builders rejected, became the head of a corner. I was able to fulfill. I raised many people secretly without pulling them away. You know, so if you don't go for fellowship, you will not, they won't train you. So many offendable things happened to me in that place. My husband's car that crashed. My mother said, go, leave that church, it's not a good church. I said, why? I said, why should I leave the place? The place? She said, leave, they are not good. She said, when we were young, when our church, a man came to our church and parked his bicycle outside and they stole his bicycle. The church contributed money and bought to replace that bicycle. He said, you, your husband, they know what people are going through. You took your husband's car, my husband's Mercedes, then crashed in service to this, one of the pastors of the, of the, of the ministry. And the pastor came and announced to the whole church that they will buy you a car. And you went to ask them. They said, they don't know anything about the car. He said, what are you doing in that place? So leave there. I said, no, mommy, leave me. They are training me here. I'm under training. Because to exercise the heart is not by talking. It's exercise, it's stretch the heart. To exercise the heart is not by talking. The heart must pass through specific things and stand and love and give. At one time, I wanted to leave, well, when Houston, I was talking with a friend of mine. And I said, they will soon, they even may not leave itself, they will soon kick me out of this place. They will kick me out by themselves. And that night I had a dream. In that dream, I was planting purple and yellow flowers around the church building. And the Lord said, stay for now. Very small flowers. So if you, if you're carrying ministry, I can assure you, offense will be waiting for you at the door of that ministry. Satan will not allow you to deliver it. But if you are wise and if you've been well raised, you will run through those troops and do, because your times in such places are seasonal. You are there for training. When they have finished training you, they will release you to go and do your work. Praise God. I'm no longer there. But if I didn't go through all the things, and we, we didn't go through all the things we went through in that place, I wouldn't do ministry like, wouldn't do ministry like this. Probably do it in a different way. Praise God. So fellowship is very important. Communion of believers. Don't be afraid of gossip. Don't be afraid of gossip. And part of the things that cures gossip is vulnerability. What are you afraid, what are you hiding? What is in your life that you're hiding? Right? It's true. What are you hiding? You, your mistakes should be teaching class for other people. The places where you failed, the places where you stumbled should be, what you gathered from there is what you use to teach those who are coming behind. Do you understand what I'm saying? If I open up my secrets, what will you now, what will you gossip about? How will it become gossip anymore? Do you understand what I'm saying? It's because we are too, I don't want them to know. Eh, I don't want them to. Why? Okay, fine, no problem. Keep your secrets that you want to keep. That's fine. It's okay to keep it if you have secrets. But if you don't have secrets, allow people to step on you, bruise on you, get healed. Do you understand? And there's no how you'll be close to one or two people that children, technon, not technon, my POs, babies. Babies talk about everything they see. Are you, do you know that? If you are, if you have a little child at home and somebody knocks at your door and you tell your, your son, tell them I'm not at home. What will the child say? Mommy said, I should tell you, she's not at home. That's why the Bible says that the man that can hold his mouth is a what? Is a perfect man. You have matured. When you are able to not say everything that you hear. Praise God.
Thank you so much. Praise God. Okay, I have some apples. I'd like us to eat. Not now, yeah. Okay. Um, but listen, we're gonna be teaching uh, things that are a bit not like what we've always known. Uh, please just bear with us. Um, um, I'm picking that we have to prepare the saints for the age that we are in right now. Um, witchcraft have been cleverly brought into day-to-day usage. I hope you hear what I'm saying. Evil satanism, okay, has been brought in such a way, it has been so fine tuned. Okay? And this is what we are going through. Hypnotism and different kinds of things that you don't know. I mean, like, what will make you addictive to a phone? It's witchcraft. Someone has been able to make it in such a way that is so pleasant, but they've kept you bound. You understand what I'm saying? Do you get what I'm saying? Have you ever seen where, um, where you watch some movies, you see how the sorcerer would take up his hands and hold someone or suspend the person? You understand what I'm saying? Uh-huh. It's the same thing that is going on with your phone. It's not that you don't know it. So we're gonna be teaching spirit things, you know? At one time, Yeshua said, to you has been given what? The mysteries of the kingdom. So there's what's called the mysteries of the kingdom, which we haven't actually gotten into. I hope you hear what I'm saying. I mean, if you check what's going on in politics right now, governance, they don't care what you say. They just do what they want to do. Why? They've taken, they've taken time to arrest things in the spirit. Okay? They've taken time to actually bind people. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So we're gonna be learning things. I'm gonna read out some of them quickly because time is gone. One is, we need to understand what kingdom is in its totality. What is kingdom? Okay? And then who is a king or the king? You need to know that. Um, where is his domain? Okay? Now, who are the citizens, okay, of a country? In this case, is the city of God, uh, the kingdom of God, the, the commonwealth of Israel. Now, some of these things, we know it. But there are what you call connecting dots. I hope you hear what I'm saying. That keeps some things away from you. Okay? Now, what qualifies you? Okay? To be a citizen? Who are you? What is your identity? I hope you hear what I'm saying. What's your identity? Because if you don't know your identity, look at that little, little girl. Could you raise her up? Take her up again. Higher. Yay! That girl doesn't know what she's carrying inside of her. Okay? She doesn't know now that she has a womb inside of her. She doesn't know. Okay? She doesn't know she has some breasts. She doesn't know that one day milk will begin to man, come out from, from her. She doesn't. But the time will come when those things will begin to happen. Okay? Now, when she's maybe like eleven, twelve maybe, there could be some blood coming out from her. And she said, mommy, mommy, I have wounded myself. Mommy will say, no, you didn't wound yourself. This is nature. Do you hear? But right now, she doesn't know. So there's a whole lot. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So we need to really take time out. And then if you know who you are, you know that you are born not of blood, not of flesh, okay? Not of the will of man, but you are born of God. Yeah, it has to declare understanding, it has to be, nobody will tell you. You will come to the, you know, that firm understanding that you are born of God. Now, if you are born of God, it means that he's your father. And if it's your father, it means that there's something you are willing, you are going to be inheriting from him. Okay? Praise God. Yesterday I was at the airport. Was it yesterday? Okay. Was it yesterday? Yeah. I saw a young girl and I got so attracted to her. And I kept on watching her and then I saw her walk to her mom. And I saw her mom is an older version of her. And then somehow, I guess I was looking at both of them so much that the mother had to ask me that, please, do you have a pen? I said, I don't have. But that your daughter is your photocopy. Do you understand? You could see the daughter and the mother, they look alike. This one is the older version of this one. And this one is the younger version of the older one. Do you understand? So there is what is called DNA connection, genealogies. Do you understand? Now, all these things, I want us to, I know that she taught on the fatherhood of Abraham. That's right. We're gonna come back to that again. It's very important because at that time, you heard it in a different light, with a different light. Now you've grown more. You, you need to hear it again. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So we're gonna be teaching all those things and our concept of what we have known church to be by his grace would change. Would get to know more, have a clearer understanding. I hope you hear what I'm saying. Praise the Lord. There's much more, but this is just intros and hopefully, uh, and hearing what people have been saying, those who came up, they always mention Lamb's Wife. Correct? Uh-huh. So we probably would be encouraging more people to enroll in the Lamb's Wife. Discipleship, okay? I hope you hear what I'm saying. So that at least batch by batch. Um, you know, like in Nigeria, if you went to university or higher institution, you must do your youth core. So it would be something like that. Do you understand what I'm saying? Praise God. Hallelujah. Um, any questions? No? Yes? Any questions? Anything anyone wants to say? Quickly, so that we just end. Okay, I think Francis also wanted to say something. Yeah. No, you, okay, come on, Francis.
Okay. Okay, so I just noticed the significance of today. I noticed that when we were leading prayers, it got really heavy very, very quickly. Even though there were so many, usually when that happens, that usually happens when we've prayed for a meeting extensively. Okay, more to me, sorry about that. Um, so I just want to point out something. Give me that Hebrews twelve. Can y'all hear me? No? Okay. Give me the Hebrews twelve, verse twenty-two, twenty-four. Um, I think that, that verse we've been reading was actually like a literal thing that happened today, like during this, our town hall meeting.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, um, yes, he's right. Um, yeah, um, sorry, I don't know what to say. So when she came, she came and, um, when she was like, oh, Gabriel, so two angels, two angels were, they were around. And she mentioned their names. And when she was mentioning their name, so, um, they were, they are sign angels of the assignment and also for the meeting today. And also they are here to bear witness to whatever is going to say today. And they are right, they, they brought a scroll as well to write it out. Okay, we are, we are opening like this, this, a chapter of a new face for this ministry. So, yes, so I just thought so.
It's like he took my notes. Sorry? Francis, no, Francis. So, um, there's two things I'll bring out, but one of them was that the angel of the ministry. the angel of the ministry is here as well, along with, um, Gabriel and Michael. And then, this significant, it was actually, when somebody came in, that's when it hit me. He shared with me something, give me that he, okay, yes, you've come to Mount Zion, to the city of the living God, the heavenly Jerusalem, to an inaugural company of angels. So here's the part that he pointed out to me. There is the General Assembly and the Church of the Firstborn, who are registered in heaven to God. Now, initially, if you read this, you might think that the General Assembly and the Church of the Firstborn are the same thing, but there's two different companies. So I'm just seeing there is a refinement or identification of different, um, let's say, yes, caters, hierarchies or something, whatever, or intensities, as far as like engagements of the will of God is concerned. There was this pointing out of, um, different styles of leadership in the church and different structures and, um, alignments in different ways. And what you're just seeing is a fleshing out of this portion of scripture, including the inaugural company of angels and all of that too. Um, what he was pointing out was this, that, um, the, even though you said it already verbatim, the coming of Gabriel is usually a marks, like a beginning of a new season. So I feel like, um, some of the utterances that came forth were not just brought forth accidentally or passively, it was because of the presence of these entities that are here, so yeah.
Okay, I noticed something between the three of you. Okay, I saw something between, you were talking to Shileh at the back. Was it Shileh you were talking to? And then I saw three of you holding your hands. So when I saw that, I smiled because I saw kindred spirit, okay? I, I saw like company of maybe prophets or seers kind of thing. I hope you hear what I'm saying. So I'm hoping that, you know, those kind of things, those kind of connections would happen, you know, more and in different companies in the community. Hallelujah. Praise God. Okay, he wanted to say something.
Okay, it was while we were still, uh, the mic was still going around. And then they, they talk about, um, different, uh, styles of leadership. So it was more like an admonition, like searching from deep within to, to us. Um, uh, you see people who are called of God and then, who, who have God's honor on them. And then they set up those structures. Um, obviously, that has, uh, been what people have been taught to do and then they went ahead to do it. But if we now look at some people, we see that that's not how they started out originally. Uh, some of those, those things were, were built to hedge off, um, abuse, offense and all of that. So it's an admonition for us here. What you are enjoying, what's that thing that has made, uh, the character of God to be more expressed to you? Don't be a person that will take it lightly. Don't be someone through which the devil will, you know, bring out or spring offense that will now cause a drawing of lines which are not necessary. So honor what, uh, God has given you here, what we are receiving of the Lord here. And, you know, that place of staying tender and allowing God do his work, allow God to be God in your life, even in the assembly of saints. Praise the Lord Jesus. So, okay, that's for what came there, Papa. While we were praying, I began to have an experience that there was this operation of God that was whirling, like it was like a wind. And thank you, Lord Jesus. And it's something for us to receive. It's something for us to receive. So that's, I began to design it as the, a working of God's rest to us, like a wind gently blowing for us. Blowing, blowing over us, rest, rest, that's very key. And then, as that was happening, I began to see that demand coming from the spirit that the high places must be made low and the low places filled up. So this is a call from the spirit for us to, to adjust. Um, the Lord God himself want, uh, wants to partner with us to build out what he wants even in this age and time. And it wouldn't just happen haphazardly. Father God must walk within you through your heart and then he's calling on us to, um, to not stand in his way. Uh, and he would make all of us understand what those mountains, those things that have, you know, resisted God all the years, there are things that have resisted God all the years. And those things, they must come crashing. And those other valleys, they must be filled up because we, we are the expressway through which he must manifest himself. And the manifestation of God is actually full of beauty. And you don't want to stand in his way. I don't want to stand in his way. We don't want to stand in his way. It's as, as though I'm feeling the tears of God's spirit. And a, as I was saying, that that wind is a wind of rest and the sweetness of God. And I'm seeing for us, some of us have had things that have greeted us. I, I began to see clearly, um, for people who have naughty issues, things that are difficult to answer, um, challenges, I, 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 I saw clearly that not, the operation of God is actually giving you ease and those things are untied. Those hurts, those things that have caught you deep within, there is healing for you. There is healing, you know? Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing restoration, right? And, you know, there are Jesus. I'm seeing that, that writing, Father God is writing on you and there is recovery, 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 recovery. You know, there's a way this is, right? But those things that are see, it is as if they left you, that they were severed from you. But I'm seeing a joining, you know, you are moving, but the things that you lost, they are literally tied around your waist. Like, that's, that's recovery, you know? So let's receive the supply of the Lord. Some of us here have come to doubt what God is doing in us, what he has showed you in the secret place and you've been so hit hard by, you know, adversity. But Father God is, is wrapping you. It, it's like, you know, when you put something in a parcel, he is parceling him, you, okay, he's putting you within and he's parceling you, he's bringing comfort. He's bringing comfort. He's bringing comfort and, and, um, protection. Thank you, Lord Jesus.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to say, when I, when I walked in and the Mas were praying, like it was, like in my heart, I was feeling like I should, um, that I should share, whether with someone or openly, that, um, God, God tries, when God wants to give you a new position, he needs to validate why you should be given that position. So he has to take you through some trials and, and, and some, some temptings. So like, you know, when you want to tempt a steel? So like you must, the steel must be tempted before the sword can be used. And, and, and I felt like, um, just like, even, even, even before you said the Job thing, I felt like there's a position that we're supposed to come into. And before, God needs to prove to everyone that you are worthy to be given that position. So he has to take you through that thing. So when you come out of it, it is clear to everybody that you are, you are worthy to be given that position. That's just what I'm sure.
Praise the Lord. So I can hear the word pruning. Can hear the word pruning. I can hear the word pruning. God, the meeting today is about the city of God. There's a reason why that word was emphasized. God is about to build up a city in us. We are to become fitly framed together. Fitly framed, that is, there is no path, there is no gap. There is no gap in between anyone. The, there's this joint, you know how you join two bricks together, that there is no gap? We are fitly framed together. And God is about to build us into that in the body. And that is by pruning. Say, when he prunes, more fruits will come out. As he prunes, more fruit will come out. And so we must get ready to take our path. You have an allocation. Don't draw back. Everyone here has an allocation. Don't draw back. Be willing, be ready, be willing. Because God is about to take us to the holy mountain. His holy mountain. The highest mountain. Oh, that mountain where we will have all authority and we will speak and every word will be here and amen. That place that is high and we form the hilltop, we can see all that is around. We can see, our view is so high, our view is so clear. Say, we will not be like children, we will not be like them who see in a glass faintly. But then what will we see? Face to face. No more children who see in a glass faintly. It's not blurry vision, it's face, very clear vision. He's about to give us a clear vision of himself, but how will it happen? We must be pruned, get ready. That pruning is to make us bear fruit. We become more fitted together. The arm and the leg will walk together. The eye and the lips will walk together. They'll walk in sync and everything will flow out. Like he says in the word, "Out of Mount Zion", the beauty, the perfection of beauty, God shines forth at the top of the hill. God shines forth at that top. Get ready. He wants to take us all up with him. Come up here, da. And I will show you many things. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
So earlier, while we were praying, um, I saw from a place of rest. I saw from a place of rest. So, um, I think this is like the tough time, I'm seeing that this year, but particularly for the meeting, I saw from a place of rest. And, um, one of the experiences I've been having this year, I've been seeing fountain of water, like if you have ever been to Yeshua Waterfall, you can go see that kind of fountain of water. And, um, during the meeting as well, I saw that again. Like I saw the endless flow of, of that clean water. And, um, it was that when that was going on, um, also the, those angels are still here and they are positioned, they are positioned in front. And they are still like, they are, they are still like bearing weakness to what is going on at the moment and they are still here. So I don't know if that's going to be here for, I don't know how long, but they are still here.
Hallelujah. Um, um, just to bear witness, the breakthrough thing, um, the, the breakthrough angel for breaking through, because of the new season, the Lord is like enforcing that with a release of spiritual, um, resources from heaven and administrations. I feel like all these prophets have been receiving, Rehoboth, um, all these different words, yes, yes, were meant to, basically like, yes, express them, this season of now drinking all of these things as we ought to. Um, I also see that, so like the instruction for pruning and love walk and being compacted together, what I saw was the people that fall in alignment or who obey these instructions, who refuse to be offended, who do all of these things, they'll find themselves in that company of the firstborn. That's what I just saw. And they have an, they have authority, there's specific angels that respond only to people in that circle. And I saw that, those angels, the poet that they wield, I saw, um, so that angel that spoke, when that, um, that angel appeared to Daniel that told him something, um, uh, Michael, your prince, that stands for the, for the prince of your people. I know it's not just like Israel, which is the, that's gathering together of the people of God specifically, that assembly. And there's a specific way that, um, they respond to that. That's what I just saw. I saw like a, a picture of this epicenter or nexus of the, of those operations of God and those that allow the love of God to work on the inside of them. There's angels that respond only to them because they unit themselves in this manner, so yes.
Hallelujah.
Uh, okay, so when the angels were here, I thought someone blew a shofar. I had to ask, I heard the shofar like just once, but loud and long. So I asked him, "Did anyone blow a shofar?" He said, "No." I asked mommy for Lukesh, she said, "No." So I said, "Then just sing."
Praise God. Hallelujah. I believe very strongly that, um, the, the initial harvest, the initial harvest, I don't know who remembers when Dr. Wu came. Twenty eighteen, when Dr. Wu came. And that day, Dr. Wu came, I had a dream. And that dream, there were two things I saw that were meant to offload in the ministry. And last week, uh, last week, oh, yeah, from last week, I began to ask the Lord that what happened to those offloads? Had they been, has it happened? Or it is yet to happen? I just began to ask the Lord about an understanding. I believe that we are about to enter into the first phase of the harvest of what we have been laboring for. And I want to, there is also a church of the firstborn within the church, within the local church. I don't know, I, I'm not saying this to segregate and I'm not saying this for the pride. You've learned humility, so you would hear some things, okay? When the angel of the Lord came to Daniel, he said, "Daniel, a man greatly beloved." It wasn't meant to fan Daniel's ego. He, the angel was not afraid that if Daniel hears it, he will be puffed up. Do you understand what I'm saying? He just made those declarations to Daniel because that is the testimony of Daniel's life, that it has cost the heavens to love him because God could trust him with secrets of generations, of ages, not just generations, because of his work. Do you understand? His commitments, his focus, his commitment to his watches, his commitment to not defiling himself, his commitment to understanding the system of the world and what Israel stood for. And he stood for it all through the span of his rulership. Bought him, purchased him. You know, Bible says that, they themselves, that those who, uh, 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 um, use their offices well, purchased to themselves. Do you understand what I'm saying? So there are those that have wrestled the enemy and resisted being unplugged. Hallelujah. So that they could be built for what God wants to do. So that here is the church of the firstborn. Uh, 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 please let, bear witness to what I am seeing. Praise God. Now, that is also because we're in a season, apart from entering into the harvest, we're in a season where those that have been raised are going to raise orders to be like them, to learn what they have learned. So we are, we are, we are going to start experiencing Rehoboth now. We're gonna start experiencing Rehoboth now and then of course to Bethel. You know, there's gonna be, we, we have been talking about it. It came to us as a word to labor into it. But I believe that we're about to start experiencing it. And we will see, there are spec, there are specific things that will happen and we know that we have entered into the first initial bit of harvest. I don't wanna talk too much, but there is a harvest that we are meant to come into. We are at the, at the brink of it. Praise God. You wanna say something else, Francis? You can take.
Yeah.
Someone might have a word. I don't know if it's Lukesh, but someone might have a, maybe a message in tongues or something, I don't know. Maybe just praying to the Holy Spirit until it sits. Do you have something? Okay.
Hallelujah. Can we just pray in the spirit for a few minutes? We just want the Lord to express himself fully in this meeting and, um, pour out everything that we are meant to receive by the hearing, by the hearing of our ears this evening. Let's just pray in the spirit. Let's just pray in the Spirit.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. So we should look for an upgrade in sight. Hallelujah. Clarity of sight and discernment. I'd like to repeat it again. That we should look for or we, we should, um, yearn and prepare ourselves and strive to receiving an upgrade in sight. Okay? Not just, uh, uh, vaguely, but clarity, sharpness. I hope you hear what I'm saying. You know, I remember when, I think it was Jeremiah that the Lord was asking, now what do you see? And he said, I see an almond tree. And what did the Lord say? He said, you have seen well. I hope you hear. Praise God. So, uh, uh, it's our prayer, okay? It's our prayer, earnest prayer, that in this company would, um, have a company of seers. I hope you hear, those who are able to see well, see sharply, clarity. You know? I, I think the Lord was talking about, uh, Moshe, that, um, who did he say? If there's any prophet. Face to face? Yeah, with Moshe. So see face to face with Moshe. So, um, that should be where we should, you know, um, have pleasure of and desire to clear, uh, clear sight, discernment. Okay? And then we are to engage in praise and worship intentionally to receive a new measure of sight. Praise the Lord.